I'd like to call the Monday, October 18th, regular Sonora City Council meeting to order at 5:02 PM. Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hawkins.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Plummer.
Here.
Councilmember Garaventa.
Here.
Councilmember Sagerstrom.
Here.
And Councilmember Sutch.
Here.
Okay, all of us are here. City Clerks report on agenda posting.
Your agenda was posted on Thursday, October 14th at 3:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Approval of the agenda. Any councilmembers want to move, take away? Okay. Presentations, we have none. Public comment on non-agenda items. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a three-minute presentation. Any members of the public would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Jane Larga, League of Women Builders of the Motherlode Observer Corps Chair. The mission of the Observer Corps is to promote transparency and accountability in government. For the past year, we've been, or over a year, we've been watching your sessions from home, and it's just delightful to be back in person, be able to see you masked, and get to follow you here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Don Nussel. I would like to propose to the city council that we organize a volunteer day where as many of the public as we can possibly muster would show up on Stockton Road to help to clean up and revitalize the scar left by the fire. I know a lot of that is city property, and therefore you probably have a keen interest in making it look good again. It's a darn shame that that happened, and that the whole approach off of 108 into Stockton Road has been decimated by that fire. Therefore, I think that with enough volunteers, we could clean up and change the way it looks. We could talk to the Forest Service about the right type of plant species to be planted, and then we could clear away dead and grotesque-looking burn stuff and change the narrative so that rather than, "Oh, my gosh, what happened to Sonora?", people would say, "Sonora, once again, is beautiful and welcoming and looking good." So it has to do with drainage issues, has to do with certain cleanup issues, has to do with planting native species, and I think the public, hopefully, would be interested in participating. You have one participant, that's me, and I hope that you can put it together, as how that can happen administratively, with waivers of liability and so on and so forth, so that we, as a team, can get together and fix that mess. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the public's information, the council's not allowed to comment on any of the public comments at this time, so, just so everyone knows. Okay, anyone else like to speak on public comment? Okay, so moving on, thank you for everyone that did speak. Onto consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar considered routine and will be voted on in one motion unless a council member or member of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, item will be removed from consent calendar and considered separately. Approval of dispersments in the amount of $165,075.05 and $156,800.44 for payroll, inclusive employee salaries, employer and employee taxes, and retirement contributions, miscellaneous voluntary employee deductions, holiday pay, and other adjustments. Any council comment? Any public comment on this matter? Okay, so we'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
Move to approve the consent calendar?
Second. Motion by Councilmember Garaventa, second by Mayor Pro Tem Plummer. Okay, on this one, do we need, is it a simple roll call vote or just...? Okay, ayes. So, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? Okay, passes five to zero. Next to public hearing, item number four. Consideration to approve first reading and introduction of ordinance number 881, reading by title only, waiving further reading and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sonora, amending chapter 830-030, Emergency Services Director, Assistant and Coordinator, Office Created, Section 830.40, Line of Succession, Section 830.60, Authority, Control, and Management of Resources During a State of Local Emergency, and Section 830.80, Responsibility for Emergency Services Program Within the City. Mary Rose?
City Councilmember, this item is actually being introduced by your city attorney, Douglas White. He will introduce the item, and then there will be follow-up from city staff from your fire chief, Amy New.
Is there a light on? Just push and hold, and it'll turn on.
Lou?
There you go.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and it's good to be here in person. What happened for you is just a change to, a potential change to our municipal code that would change the Emergency Services Director. Safe to say that the last 12 to 18 months... City Administrator. I think it's safe that the last 18 months have been anything but normal, in the sense that I've been there three proclamations of local emergency that it needed to be called for one reason or another. And it kind of worked the eyes of the eyebrow of just, you know, the value of having somebody who's kind of on staff and dedicated on a particular case and be able to kind of respond to those. This wouldn't really take any authority away from any of the local officials or anything else like that, it just takes an immediate decision authority and vested with the City Administrator for purposes. Any actions that are taken, and I'll obviously follow that from that side, ultimately by the city council? And so, just more of the rapid response to those different situations, fire, or pandemic, or other situations. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I think it's not the first time you've actually asked this, Chief. Look at it, and you can see what they've... With that, the fire chief, we have a couple of questions.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and the public. Just wanted to, I think I've spoken to all of you in regards to this issue before you. We just want to come in line with the state and federal guidelines and mimic what the county is looking at as well. The Washington Fire definitely brought to light the necessity to have the city administrator in the position of our emergencies director so that knowing the budget, knowing the constraints that the city may have, and being able to direct emergency personnel onsite from the EOC and getting feedback from the incident commanders is crucial in moving forward. Also, identifying the roles and responsibilities of the council members. And as I had mentioned to several of you, you know, I personally take what happened as my failure as well on not communicating the roles and responsibilities and having those trainings for the city council. So, moving forward, if this does get approved, one of the items I've identified that need to come forward is those trainings on the EOC with the council to define those roles and responsibilities. It's extremely important that we're proactive. We were a little behind the eight ball with this emergency, and so I don't want that to happen. I don't want any of you to be in that position, or myself in the future, or the city administrator. So, it is my recommendation that we move the Director of Emergency Services as a city administrator, and then make sure that we have trainings on the EOC and the roles and responsibilities of the council and each department head as that moves forward. We can't dictate what type of emergency we're going to have, but we know we're going to have future emergencies, and I want to make sure that we're proactive in getting those areas trained as much as possible. So, thank you very much.
And just one final comment. This ordinance does put us more in line with what the council adopted in 2014 for their Emergency Operation Plan. It gives more role and responsibility to the city administrator, which is detailed in our Emergency Operations Plan from 2014. And in that plan, it also details the roles and responsibility of every staff member when we activate an emergency operations center. So, we have been working with the county. We're going to be doing, we did our first after-action review last week with the county. We're going to be starting trainings with the county on emergency response, starting on October 29th for staff. So, we, Washington Fire, and then with COVID as well, we are taking this extremely seriously moving forward and ensuring that staff are fully trained up and that we are communicating with the council their roles and responsibility in an emergency.
Any councilmember questions? Councilmember Sutch?
Where is the 2014 plan found?
I have a hard copy in my office, but we'll make sure that you get a copy as well. I believe all councilmembers perceived a copy in 2014, but we'll make sure everybody has a copy of that.
It's not on the website, then?
It is not.
Okay.
Oh, that's fast.
Councilmember Sagerstrom?
Can you light touch?
Yeah, double tap, okay. All right, thank you. Should the training and roles and responsibilities be part of this resolution? The fact that these things are going on and should be noted as part of the resolution so that they are established and initiated?
So, this is an ordinance, not a resolution?
I mean, I mean, sorry.
No, I think, I don't believe that training should be part of the ordinance. The ordinance sets the policy. A training is the implementation of the administrative element of that policy. So, when the council adopted the Emergency Operation Plan, it is somewhat detailed in that. But as staff and as we go forward with working with the county, who is in charge of the emergency operations for our, you know, for the county and for working with the city as well, those trainings become more evident for staff to participate in. We can update our Emergency Operation Plan to ensure that those trainings are being met. But again, the ordinance sets the policy, and then your plan sets the administrative implementation of that policy.
This will all be clear when we get the 2014 plan?
Yes, but again, we're going to have to update that plan to be reflective of everything, because it is outdated since 2014. So, we need to make sure, so the plan when 2014 was done in concurrence with the county and state mandates as well. So, then we need to go back and review that we are up to date on all those county and state mandates as well, you know, seven years out of date.
So, Councilmember Sutch?
You can go.
Sometimes you ask the question, and you elaborate more, and I was like, "Oh, yeah, I didn't think about that." So, go ahead.
I would just ask that the council also be part of that training and not just staff, even if it doesn't include council responsibilities, because it only gives us a bigger picture, a better sense of the bigger picture, and it allows us to do whatever jobs we do better.
So, it's county staff, so I can't dictate who's a part of that, but I can discuss it. I know there is a difference between staff training on emergency versus what elected is involved in emergencies. So, what, in talking with your fire chief and your police chief, we would like to hold a whole staff-wide training on emergency to go over internally those roles and responsibilities of elected official versus staff. What I am understanding from the 29th training is it's more at a staff level, and I have not heard from the county on whether or not it would be open to elected officials.
If you could advocate for that, that would be appreciated.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I was going to say ditto on that. I did want to ask our city attorney one question, which was, do you see more cities in California going this direction?
And Doug, I've gotten feedback from the public that they, even though we can hear you wireless, that it's not, they're picking it up off other microphones, so it might be better to use hands. All right, hopefully that's better. I do, I mean, I think just because of the quick turnaround time, I think the most common model is with the city manager, city administrator. When it's not, it's either in the police chief or the fire chief. I think that you guys are the only ones that I have currently. I don't think Angels is, I think Angels is city administrator as well.
Yes.
So, I think you guys are the only city that I have where the emergency official is actually vested with one of the elected positions. So, I think that, you know, the big safety net is whatever's taken has to be immediately, you know, within a very short period of time ratified by the city council to remain valid. I think it's seven days off, off the top of my head. And so, that's why I think that there's not so much heartburn on it. But I think it's more just a matter of availability than it is a matter of anything else. Well, it was your question, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's right, you asked this.
It's a masked question.
Wait, we look a lot alike, so.
Yeah.
No, no, he asked this, I thought I was following up on his question. So, I apologize, me.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
I also have a question for our city attorney.
I've been on Zoom so long, I just, now I'm looking at the wrong person, so. I know.
So, without giving a seminar, can you just briefly elaborate what the appropriate duties or responses of elected officials is? Because many of us here want to jump in and do things, and sometimes I understand that's just not appropriate.
Yeah, I think, I think that, so your emergency action plan is what's really going to lay out the role that you provide, and it's going to be different on the jurisdiction and the way that they're set up. So, for like instance, Turlock that had head to fire chief as the emergency operations, it's a little bit different than Dixon that has like a city manager form. And so, I think it depends on what that plan says and what you should do. There's certainly a role that comes in for electeds, and there's very, I mean, candidly, there's very limited things that anyone can do in that role without taking votes, because the major component of it tends to be some kind of abridgement of rights or spending of money. So, for instance, in Angels, when it happened, we had a road washed out. And so, the city administrator, Melissa Eads, over there real quickly, had to call a state of emergency because we couldn't get a council meeting, it was a dangerous condition, and there's only so long you really want a road washed, you know, washed out before you get repairs starting under the way. But the council had to come back and ratify approval of the funds that were expended. So, that was an example that's kind of just down the street of something that was used within the last 24 months, two years, it was about two years ago. And so, and a lot of it has, is frankly more, I mean, a lot of the front-end stuff is very bureaucratic. You know, when the fires come in, it's a lot of coordination with the fire department and stuff like that, and having single point of contact. And I think the role, like in those situations, is taking the direction in that case from the fire chief is to, what's the appropriate role, helping with evacuations, or setting up kind of like places where people can go to shelter and be safe. But Chief New can probably talk to this better than I can. But the biggest thing is having all of those roles memorialized in the emergency action plan so we know what to do. And I think, you know, for you, for Sonora, for Angels, it's really important, because we've had the conversations of how you're similar to Paradise and how you're not, right? And you guys have to be a little bit more prepared than other places I represent, like a Dixon or an Oakdale or Riverbank that, I mean, you can just go drive over fields if you need to to escape. I mean, you guys have some topography issues that you have to deal with. So, so, long answer to what should have been short. It's really in the emergency action plan.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, if I may, one of the duties of a Director of Emergency Services, Emergency Services Director is to ensure proper allocation of resources, and with that comes allocation of personnel and telling staff where they can and cannot be during an emergency. And that's somewhat problematic when you have an elected official talking to staff and allocating staff of where they should be. Generally, we have that. Elected officials don't generally direct staff, they direct the city administrator, obviously, but not those other staff as well. So, that's some of the issue. The other issue is too, and I know Fire Chief New can talk to this as well, that some of the information, and Doug talked about it, is, you know, receiving information as to evacuations, who's being evacuated, and so forth. Some of that information is, can be potentially confidential information, and so we want to make sure that that remains within the auspices of the EOC and keeping that information confidential.
Thank you. Appreciate the addition there. Any other questions? Okay, I will ask for any public comment on this matter. Is there any public comment?
Are you the city administrator?
I am.
So, I'm interested in what you talked about as far as what your appropriate duties would be, what your role would be. Obviously, there would be an incident commander, correct?
No, no.
No, not you, not you, but there would be one that you would be working with, I guess. Okay, that would be maybe the sheriff or the highway patrol?
You know, generally, it depends on the emergency.
Amy, maybe? Amy says yes. Okay, so, and the training would be what? Do you would be trained on how to think correctly? Or how to recognize an emergency?
I think what would go probably a little bit quicker, just so we don't, you know, go back a lot of back and forth.
All right, so, I'm wondering, what is the training? What are the appropriate duties? What is the role? Elaborate on what was lacking in the Washington Fire that that person would fulfill. It was the planes from our air attack base that made the difference in Paradise and Sonora. We did not have a big wind, which was extremely important. And then, as far as ensuring public resources, which I think we're talking about your role would be, and maybe approving evacuations and saying, "Yeah, you agree." Elected officials would not direct staff who have been trained to respond to an emergency. I'm sure, from what you said, you recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. I think just as one of your emergency services managers, it's only fair for you to hear where I stand on this. So, I thought I would share that I do support what's being recommended. Just for the simple fact of logistically, it makes sense. It's how we operate our city anyway. There is a, clearly a council oversight to what we do, day-to-day operations, and there's council involvement on many aspects of everything we do. When it comes down to, you know, having someone available, I mean, there's a city administrator onsite seven days or five days a week, 50, 60 hours a week, something like that, that is, you know, it's time to go, let's go, and we get rolling. And continuity, we talked, I think, talked a little bit about training. Chief, Fire Chief brought it up, and that's a really good point. Some of these trainings take a while to just schedule and get to. And by the time that one person who would be the mayor in this, you know, present tense, would be able to get through a couple of courses, maybe the rotation goes to another mayor and somebody else that has to start over from scratch and get that. So, to keep that continuity going and the experience going, you know, hopefully, the city administrator's position stays, you know, with one person for quite some time. The idea there would be to have that continuity and just be able to jump in and pick up where you left off with training and build on that each and every time. Not to say, you know, I think we all should be trained, every one of us, but we'll get different trainings, right? Different levels for what our responsibilities are. But anyway, those are my thoughts and where I stand on it. It's definitely no dig or no reflection on the quality of our council, any way, shape, or form. It's just, logistically, it makes sense to me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council.
Can I make one more statement just before, because I don't, I mean, I want to make sure that we're having this conversation, that we're clear. So, I, I mean, I don't want the implication of this item to be that anything went wrong or something wasn't the way that it should have been. We're looking at ways to always kind of improve and to create continuity and stuff like that. So, I think, you know, from the outset, I don't want there to be like a sense of like, you know, "Oh, something happened that shouldn't have happened, and therefore this is here." That's not, that's not the reason. This is revisiting something that we had talked about before, having had a couple of critical incidences, and realizing that maybe the city would benefit from, you know, your city administrator who already has overseas like public works and these departments, being able to have the ability to go and move those resources around that is kind of needed. And also, I mean, as we've seen with the pandemic, it's, you know, you have to have the skillset to be able to also deal with, with, I guess, viruses and health, public health and safety issues, fire issues, as well as police, you know, you know, police issues, because there aren't just one type of local emergency. But I don't want to leave the, you know, the implication that anything was wrong. It's just, you know, when you're putting in emergency services, it's planning for the future and how maybe, you know, these things could, you know, could maybe function a little bit more tightly. So, I just want to make sure that that was clear for the record.
Any other questions? Okay, so, I guess this is one, this is the first reading, and then we got to vote on it to go to a second reading. If we go to a second reading. So, I guess I'll look for a motion and a second.
Okay, I will move to approve the first reading. Are we waiving the first reading? Oh, okay. Move to approve the first reading and introduce ordinance number 881, reading by title only and waiving further reading. Period. I mean, I could go, and that's already been read.
I second that.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Garavena, second by Councilmember Sutch. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? Okay, passes five to zero. This will be brought back at the next meeting. Mary Rose?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, on item number five, unfinished business. Receive an update on the status of the Vision Sonora Committee appointments of two members of the public. And I am so happy to bring this up. So, we, you know, I'll start off, we had four people, four city residents apply. In that time, one moved out. Another notified me today that they were not interested, and it left us with two great candidates. So, Charles Sagerstrom and Lori Lehman. I am planning on appointing to the Vision Sonora Committee. I spoke with both of them, then Charles, if you want to come up and say anything, that's fine. If you want to sit in the back, that's great, too. I'm just glad to have you here. I think a lot of both of these individuals, and I know they'll do good work. You know, I spoke to both of them on the phone, talked to them about the crazy times that we're living in, and, you know, just remember that city staff has got a lot on their plate, so, you know, we've got a lot of work to do. So, this will come back before us in the first week, first meeting in November, correct?
Yes, correct. The way that the current item is agendized is just to receive an update, not to approve the members. So, the mayor wanted to provide an update, and then we'll bring back for the formal ratification of the new members on the first of November.
You know, I'll just throw out there a big, you know, I get a lot of public feedback everywhere I go, and Jim, I know because you're at Lowe's, you get a lot of feedback, too. So, you know, one of the, one of the big questions I asked and talked about was, you know, our historical significance of Sonora. And, you know, both, both of these individuals really care a lot about our city. They're more than willing to look past politics and everything else to try to make Sonora better, you know, make Sonora more Sonora. And I think that's one of the most important things we can do. So, I'm satisfied, and I thank you, Mr. Sagerstrom. I really appreciate your service, and, you know, again, like you said earlier, you know, two burdens were mayors before, and, you know, you're just following through, and I really do appreciate that. It's really, really neat, so. We don't need any motions or anything, so I'll go to item number six.
Do we do public?
Oh, I'm sorry. Brain is just going everywhere tonight. Okay, is there any public comment on this matter? Okay, is there any public comment on this matter? Look, Lori Lehman. Okay, anyone else? Okay. Okay, on item number six. Receive an update from councilmembers Jim Garavenna and Colette Such on the status and progress of a resolution in support of racial justice from the Social Equity Committee.
So I will start, excuse me, I will start. And Jim will rescue me and I can't think of what to say. So the process right now and for the last several meetings, we've been working on a resolution for, for racial justice. And how we have gone about this was we asked that everyone bring resolutions that they found from other communities or resolutions that they wrote themselves. We combined all those and found like subject matter, like, and I think we ended up with six subject matters. One was just starting the resolution by introducing the city. The second one was an acknowledgement of the Niwok people who have been here for 10,000 years. The third one was healing the wounds of racism. The fourth one was that what we did not want in our city any longer. And the fifth one was welcoming, fostering and affirming. And the sixth one was just a statement about what we were going to do in our community. So far, we have nine whereas or therefore statements. These are not finished, but they're a pretty good indication of what will be included in the resolution. The word, sometimes the language needs to be improved or the writing needs to be improved. And actually, I see a glaring typo as I look at that. And we have about, I don't know, four or five topics kind of to address still. So that's where we are. I can't give you a timeframe necessarily, but I think the last meeting, for instance, was actually not, it was a difficult meeting. But I think a lot of extraordinary progress was made in the last meeting. If anyone is interested in watching it, it's an hour and a half. But I do think there were difficult conversations and there were, there were some poignant statements made by committee members. The six committee or seven committee members are Jim Garaventa, myself, Mercedes Toon, Nikki Coleman, Nathan Morales, Alyssa, Alyssa Mansfield. I left something out. Hope I left it. Oh, Darren Dues, I'm sorry. He was one of the ones who actually had sort of a poignant statement at the last meeting. So anyhow, that's where we are right now. Did I leave anything else?
Okay.
Any questions or?
I personally don't have any questions right now. I know I've been getting a lot of feedback from the public. I'm sure the two of you have also about what's going on, you know, why isn't things done? Why aren't things done, that type of thing? So I think it's good to communicate.
For my part, I think it just takes time. Unfortunately, you know, when you're on Zoom and you got seven people with seven different ideas of how things should be and knowing when to talk, when not to talk. I mean, it just, it is time consuming. Hopefully, we can come to a resolution in the next, as soon as possible. You know, we're limited in time. A lot of meetings, you can go two hours, you know, in sections. But we've been one hour meetings because of scheduling issues, both with, with people on the committee and also bumping up against other things, such as the plan commission meeting is right after our social equity committee. And so you can only use Zoom on, we only have enough staff to use one person, you know, to use Zoom once and you can't, you know. So I'm kind of going all, I'm kind of blabbing, but it's, it just takes time.
If I could just make one more comment, it's, it's one thing to write a resolution as an individual, but it's a very different project when it's seven people. And it's a really different project if you combined a group that doesn't necessarily agree, which is, which makes it richer and deeper and more meaningful. So the, the pressure can't be on time. The pressure needs to be on doing it correctly and fairly and under, and really hearing every voice in the group. So just wanted to add that.
Okay. Anyone have any questions before I ask for public comment?
Well, I, I have some comments and it will probably elicit some comments from the public. I feel that, I mean, when I read the resolution in progress, it looks like, at least parts of it, and I realize it hasn't been adopted yet, are deliberately provocative and designed to alienate, to some degree, a large part of the county's population, especially when you talk about, for no particular reason, it doesn't add anything to it, but white supremacy culture to, I mean, when you read woke statements where that can mean anything that four plus four, I mean, two plus two equals four is a white supremacy statement and it can mean anything else to just about anything that one, a detractor of white people wants to include. I find that unfortunately very provocative. And when we go back to the purpose statement, it was to formalize the city's of Sonora's active commitment to belonging, fairness, justice, equity for all, to listen to diverse and marginalized voices and to provide a safe space for conversation, reflection, understanding, to recognize and acknowledge implicit bias, something I still have a hard time with. And I feel that it's just running off the rails to please a few activists and is not going to be in this current form, anything close to reflective of our county and the population that we have here in the city. This doesn't speak for me when we talk about, it would be perfectly fine to say just, whereas the city of Sonora condemns any form of racially motivated hate and intolerance, that white supremacy culture is just to be provocative and to create division. It adds nothing to that. So anyway, I would ask that, why don't you wrap it up and maybe make it so it's palatable for, you know, the vast, for all of the inhabitants of the city where we agree on it, instead of creating a document designed to disagree. So when we, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for Tim. Anyone else from the council for us for public comment?
I'll just say one thing. You know, white supremacy culture, that statement has been a tough one in the group. I will tell you that the four women of color think it's very important. And, and I also agree that the definition of white supremacy culture is varied. And so one of the things we talked about at the last meeting was to actually include what we mean when we say that, because it's not so, and then I think it is not quite as provocative. But that's an ongoing, that's an ongoing conversation.
But an addendum, I would, I would just point out that an addendum to any statement is weak sauce. So you say, well, we define it as such, but when we make a statement for the city, then it's going to be read just as the statement without people going to footnotes generally.
It's not going to be a footnote. It would be a where as statement that proceeds it. It's not an addendum, but.
You understand my concern.
I understand your concern. Yes, absolutely, I do. I, it's, the last couple of meetings have been a lot of that conversation.
Aggressively, I have not had the time to.
You've been fighting fires.
To watch them, yeah.
And bringing it up, I just would like to make a point that all these meetings are archived and can be watched on, how do we, the YouTube channel? Is that where we have them? Or do we have them on the website?
There's a link on the website.
There's a link on the city's website, so everyone's more than free to, and actually encouraged to watch some of what's going on.
And they are very easy to access. It's simply you find them and click.
Okay, I will ask for any public comment on this matter.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Don Nussel. So I'm kind of coming from a lack of information. I do not know what the resolutions from other communities are. And I would like copies and I'll come back tomorrow to pick that up. I want to know what the resolution is and I would come back tomorrow and pick up copies. Surely, there is a copy of the draft resolution because Mark commented that it seemed to have some provocative wording. It alienates a large part of the county's population. I recognize that everybody in this room is white. So what is this white supremacy culture all about? Can you go into a county of all white people and tell them they're white supremacists just because they're white? What is that? What is that all about? What problem or perceived problems, Jim and Colette, are you trying to eradicate? How does this resolution address those problems? And what do you expect to accomplish by putting an ordinance together or legislating public perception or public reaction? I'm confused. I don't know what this is all about and I'm very concerned that the city's going down a road they don't need to go down. If you want to address public perception and white supremacy and so forth, you cannot do an ordinance to do that. Formalize the city of Sonora's commitment to protect marginalized voices. I think that is up to the individuals to work with other people to get their voices heard if you don't think you're being heard. I don't think you can put together an ordinance to make marginalized voices heard. And who are they? What are they? What's that going to accomplish? Racially motivated hate? I work with Hispanic people. I work with black people and they are my friends. They are the people that I love. And I am offended that you would say that white supremacy is a culture in this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, long time no see. Hi, committee, hi, staff. Good to see everybody. So today I'm here both as a member of the public, but also as a member of the Tulomee Department of Public Health. So I'm reaching out to say a couple of different things. One, I'd just like to inform you guys that there is Office of Health Equity that is active in California. And because of COVID this last year, there has been a lot of major changes. Specifically, there have been a lot of grants that have been provided to not just our county, but all different counties in order to work on health equity. And specifically to look at how COVID has ravaged certain communities more heavily than others, as well as, you know, other aspects of health equity. And so I think in regards to understanding what's the role of a committee that, you know, doesn't necessarily deal with health equity, but just equity in general, is important to really think about it as not so much a policy change, but a policy influencing council, if you will. I think the idea behind, you know, partnerships is to really bring in committees and stakeholders, you know, and create like a community based lateral form of communication. And so, you know, I think from the perspective of the Health Department, we're really hoping to at some point connect with the Social Equity Committee, really kind of talk about some of the issues, what that looks like from our perspective, from health equity perspective. And, you know, we do hope that that partnership moves forward. Additionally, something else that I'd like to, I guess, just touch on is that equity is kind of a spectrum, right? It's like anything else that we study is something that first you have to define. You have to understand the history of it. And then that's when you can start looking at what's the current situation? How do we change that? And so even though it feels like maybe it's taken a long time to just create, you know, the basis of what will be, that's important because if the basis is not strong, then you have to go back and rechange it. So we have those conversations about, do we have racism in Sonora or in Tulomee? Do we have issues about, you know, what is the white supremacy and stuff like that? It's important to first agree on it and understand that there's all these historical factors that we have to explore before we can even talk about equity. And so, you know, it's just all I wanted to say and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. Any other questions or comments? Oh.
I would just like to note that this is a resolution and not an ordinance.
I, you know, I just want to throw out there, as mayor and a voting member of the council, I hope, because I understand this is partly proposed, being worked on, anything can change. I really hope something comes back before us that all five of us can vote on. Unfortunately, unfortunately, with many of the public, right, left, indifferent, black, white, gay, lesbian, anything else, there are certain things in some of the proposals that I'm seeing in here that are being considered very divisive. And I don't want this to be divisive. And I don't, I know Councilmember Such and Councilmember Garavenna, I know neither of you want things to be divisive. I know that. I know the both of you very well. And Jim, we've been knowing each other going over 10 years now. And you're probably one of the least divisive people I've ever met. So, and Councilmember Such, the last three years I've known you, I mean, it's, I just want something to come back here that we can be proud of, that we can show the people, hey, look, it took forever, but we got it done. And then the council voted on it, it passes five to zero, and we can be proud of it. I hope that's what happens. I do believe there's some special interest on the Equity Committee. I don't believe it's either of you. But there is some special interest. I'm not going to name it off because it doesn't matter right now. But I really want to see something come before us that is, that is something we can all agree upon. So that's my two cents. Is there anything else from any of the council members? Okay.
Well, I'm going to speak in favor of the city and the county for just a second. And while there are doubtless some racists among us, the proposition that we are racist either because we are white or just because we live in Tulomee County is something that I greatly resent and I think insults all of us. And it's not necessarily, I'm not saying Pablo was exactly saying that. I can't know what people are thinking. But often, that has been implied in this entire discussion. And that's actually one of the beginning reasons why we started the committee. There were actually two reasons. And I was the numskol that proposed it. But one was because there were, there was a public belief that our, our police department was unfairly targeting minorities. And was, yes, because I was the one who made the, I know why I, I proposed it. And then there was additional information regarding some letters and thought that some of these accusations that we have white supremacist groups and police actions that are inappropriate. And yet we, to my knowledge, haven't spent five minutes in the committee meetings dealing with what are very important questions. And they really are our business as a council. Yeah, if there are problems, that's something we can deal with. We're not going to cure a racist heart, or at least not, not by what we do here. And like I say, I really resent the implication that, that we are a racist group or people. like I say, I really resent the implication that, that we are a racist group or people. And that is not something that I believe I hear from either of you. But in the discussions, that's what it sounds like. That's what the language of many of these, these propositions for the resolution sound like. And I would like to second, I amend it, but the mayor's contention that it would be really nice to have something that we all would support and agree on, and that represents the best that we are without, without dividing us and probably not helping. So at that, I cede the floor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you both for the update. Onto new business. Consideration of authorizing authorization to advertise for public bid the Red Church pedestrian and circulation improvement project. Mary Rose, or Rochelle?
Yeah, this item before you is going to be brought on by your Community Development Director, Rochelle Keller.
Thank you. So it's nice to get this before you guys tonight. We've been working very hard on this. We have Galen Greits here in the room. He is the project engineer. He can ask any detail questions that you guys might have about the project. This project, the plans have been fully approved by Caltrans. We have an encroachment permit in hand to authorize that the project can be constructed. So we, I'm going to walk through a little bit of what's included in the plan. What this was originally is not what it is today. And when Mary Rose told me they had a picture of the park on, my mother today almost had a heart attack because I figured everybody was going to be upset thinking we put the park back in. And of course, we did not, based on the plans that are before you tonight. So the project as it stands today is very similar to, as far as the street goes, the stop bar coming down on Snell, Snell Street will be in the same location where it is today. The modifications were slight enough that it wasn't worth, so we're just going to leave it in the same location. What this project does do is it improves the sidewalks that are in, some of which are in horrible conditions. It also puts all the ADA improvements in that are required that right now people are walking off curbs at our crosswalks, and this does all the ramping that's required on those crosswalks. It also gets the cross slopes correct on the sidewalks in this area. So basically, this is a sidewalk and ADA improvement project, and that's what's before you tonight. We did include the pavers, the paving bars, that was something that was requested. Those were put in. The bulb out in front of City Hall is gone as requested by the council. So now all that you have are the ADA ramps that will, on the edge of the sidewalks. We did retain the, what's it called? The, the horse things across the street in front of the fire museum. So we did that. We moved them back a little bit closer to the building so there wasn't such an obvious difference between the height of them. And made them out of brick and metal so that they're easier for Public Works to maintain. The wood has been an issue for them. So it does include replacing the planners. It does illuminate one as per the city administrator's requirement when Tim was here, when we were working with him. The upper planner has been removed, so you'll have three full planners in front of the building instead of the four that you have today because of the problems on that upper one close to the insurance agency. So that, it's all included in there. The brick layout, all that is done. There is, like I said, it went from more of a park and beautification to more of just a sidewalk improvement ADA project. It does, however, have some things that will help to slow down the traffic, which was one of the intents of this project from the beginning, so that people will slow down. So as they're coming out of the main area where it's really congested and they start picking up speed coming up in front of the City Hall, we all know that there's been a major issue with pedestrians in this area. I personally have almost been hit twice crossing the street with people slamming on their brakes. So I know firsthand that it's a problem. We hear it when we're upstairs. So this project will make that area more visible for people to cross more safely across. But it does also widen the turn pocket. That is a design exception that we got from Caltrans. So that hopefully the visually narrowing the lanes. It will also include fog lines on the other side. So that maybe with that visual slowness and with the increase of the sidewalk in front of the Red Church, maybe people slow down a little bit just because it feels more congested and more constrained instead of so open as it is today. So we did work as best as we could on that corner of Elkin and Washington Street, Highway 49. We know that that's an issue. We did include tracking to hopefully track. People follow the tracking, so they move over to the left as they're making that left lane in. It includes striking for the lane, the center lane. And it also includes a curb above, widening the sidewalk and including a curb right before that corner. And the bottom step going into the house there will be removed to move stuff back, so there's a little bit more room. Galen can get more into detail with you. I am not an engineer, and I don't pretend to be one, but it's been a huge learning curve over the last few years working on these projects. So I do, everything that was asked of us, we did. And then anything that Caltrans also required, we did. And these plans are ready, and they're, the bid packet is getting finished up, and we are almost there and ready to go, have everything ready that's required in the package. So we are requesting authorization to go to bid. We're intending to do the bid opening on November 30th, based on when, it'll be based on when we can release the bid because we want to give everybody plenty of time to get their bids in. The engineer, the estimate of the project is between $250,000 to $300,000. It is funded through the Caltrans Active Transportation Program. And we anticipate construction start will be March honor before March 1st. And then completed, they have 45 working days, but our, our main thing is to make sure it's completed before the roundup parade. So with that, you have, if you have any questions, sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback for some reason. And I don't have a phone with me, so it's not that. I'm just electric tonight, I guess. Anyway, if you guys have any questions, but we have done everything that's asked for us, and we really just want to get this project done, the bottom line. Thank you.
Councilmember Sutch?
So you're not moving Snell Street up?
Snell Street, the stop bar is going to be exactly where it is today.
So it doesn't affect the insurance?
Nothing.
None of that changes. Their driveways are in the same spot and everything. And then my other question was, you said that you implemented something to slow traffic down before the City Hall crosswalk?
So we, what we did is we, and Galen can, he thinks how we sat here, he can come up too. But we talked, we widened the turn pocket and we moved it over a little. It's wider than a normal one, so that kind of makes people slow down. I don't know if you want to talk anything?
That's pretty much it.
So, so we're talking about the turn pocket? Yeah.
The turn pocket, Galen Greits with Wildland Design Group. The turn pocket off Washington Street onto Snell. Right now it's 11 feet wide. We propose to make it 12 feet wide, which then the, the space between the curb and that line, instead of being an open abyss, the people, when they see the openness, they tend to speed up. It kind of keeps them confined into a more of an urban driving atmosphere.
Double tap, double tap.
Okay. Unable to press buttons. First of all, thank you very much for having an entrance and an exit to the parking garage. I think that's brilliant and necessary. But I had a question about the right-hand turn on Elkin. It's, you know, looking at the drawings, it almost looks like you eliminated that right-hand lane. And Mr. Garbene was telling me that that was probably because of the gradation. And I mean, it's just hard to tell that there's actually two lanes on, on Elkin when you're looking at the drawings.
You mean coming down on Elkin?
Yeah, turning the right corner from Elkin on to go out toward the high school on Washington Street.
There is only one lane there.
There's always been one lane.
No. Well, it's a two-way street, right?
Right.
Right.
Well, these drawings make it look like it's only going to be a one-way street in.
No, it's two-way.
No, we, we have the, when you're making a left-hand turn from Washington Street onto Elkin, we did what's called cat tracking. It's kind of like what they have over on Greenlee Road when you're going from Greenlee Road on the Mona Way. It kind of guides you. People tend to cut that entire intersection off. So we put those in to keep people making a left from Washington Street onto Elkin in their lane. And then people on Elkin making the right-hand turn to go to the high school, we actually increased the width of the wheelchair ramp and the curb right in that area to give pedestrians a little more space. We moved the center line of Elkin towards the fire museum a little bit. So to more, and right now it's, it's skewed more towards the Morgan House. So we moved it closer to the south.
About how far?
I think two feet.
Oh, that's not that much.
Not a lot. It really isn't a lot. Just, basically it was enough to give a little more space right there at the corner.
It was, it was just confusing looking at the drawings, but of course, I don't really know what I'm looking at. And I blew it up on the screen and it just looked like the right-hand lane had been completely, yeah.
Well, she's looking at number 19. And there's the, and you don't have it with you, I'm sure. But, but it's the, the, what's, I don't know what the term is. I want to say crosshatching, but I don't think it is. So you have all the, do you see it now?
You're talking about page 19?
The nine, three of, three of 12, and it says 19 in the little, very bottom, bottom right.
Yes.
It is the demo plan.
Right.
Okay. So, so he's looking at the shaded areas on, all around the sidewalks there. And it looks, see how it look, it's, the illusion makes that lane look like it squeezes in.
Correct.
And I think that's what's confusing. And not knowing exactly where the curb is going to be on there based on that drawing, where the real curb is going to be.
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead.
When we do a demo of concrete sidewalk and then go to rebuild it, we actually cut further out into the, the street so that we have room to do the forms. So the shaded area that you see going out into the street, a lot of that is going to be asphalt again. It's just that we, we, we have to remove it so that they can build the forms to build the sidewalk. And then when they finish, they'll pave up to where the new curb line is. But that center line, we are, that is the center line that we are moving to the right on the page here.
Oh, so that's before the move too, right?
Correct. This, everything you see of the line work is what's existing and then what's coming out. So you can kind of see the curb line inside the hatching. That is where it is today. But it will not, the improvements go out that far, but the actual curb line is, there will be a full lane there.
Thank you.
If I could, well, I'm sorry, if I could, while we're still on that particular corner of Elkin, since that was one of my little heartbreakers. I, from the drawings, I can't see if there, that if there's any curbing or anything that makes it harder for people to cut two feet, roughly a foot and a half, two feet off of that corner when they turn north onto Washington Street.
It's difficult for them not to.
Okay, yeah, I understand that, but.
And when we talked to Caltrans about the ballards, that was kind of a dead end for what they wanted.
Right.
So being that it's a wheelchair ramp, there's not a lot of curb there to prevent a tire, you know, from noticing. They, they, they will continue to cut that corner. So by moving the center line over, we were trying to give them room so that they are not being hit by the cars turning left onto Elkin.
So will there be, from here, it's not clear, will there be a stripe along the side, for example, that shows like we have entering or going west on Stockton from Washington Street where we have a line that shows you're not supposed to cut the corner, you're supposed to go a little bit wider?
Right now, there's no, there's no line there.
That wouldn't be hard to include if.
Yeah, there's a curb above and there's a curb on Washington Street. But right at the, you know, right where the wheelchair ramp, it's going to be pretty much flush. It's going to look a lot like it does now, just a little bit further out to give a little more room.
So what you're suggesting is adding like a fog line?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, like we have right in front of the Sonora Inn where, I mean, and a little bit of paint's really pretty cheap.
So the problem is, these are approved plans by Caltrans, and we had to get design exceptions just to get them to approve what we have here today. So they're only going to approve certain things within their purview, and that corner is their purview. And it was, it was a lot just to get them to get to this point where they understood that we couldn't do two ramps and we had to do something, and we couldn't take the house away on the corner. We couldn't do a lot of things that normally you would do for an ADA. So we did the best we can with what God gave us on that corner. And we did, but we did put a curb which is going to be higher than what the sidewalk is now. And that it will help, it should help to keep people, at least it's an obstruction for them to look at.
And while we're on, because one of the reasons that we are so interested in that particular crosswalk is that's where some large number of our accidents have occurred. And so what's been done on the other side then that, I mean, how are we going to make that a safer crossing? Since that obviously came up in discussion.
So on that one, you've got your ADA, and that is, now it has no ramp. So to meet the ADA, the tracking is about it. It's a very visible crosswalk. And there, unfortunately, Mark, there's areas where, in this city, where you can only do with what you have. But there's a lot more landing on that side of the street for the public to stay out of the way before they cross. Then today, they're right on the edge of the sidewalk and they step right off into it. Now there's a landing area in front of the Red Church that's much wider. They have plenty of room to stay back versus it's harder on that other Elkin where people's toes are, you know, closer, as you know. So they have a lot bigger landing on that other side, so that should make it much safer. I don't know if you want to add anything on that. But there's a lot more area for pedestrians in front of the Red Church than they have today. Now they just have the sidewalk.
Okay, I just recall some discussion about moving some of the signs back and from, on the south side of Elkin where there were, there were going to be some mitigation efforts there to make it easier for, for right-turning, northward-bound traffic turning onto Elkin to also see people starting off or.
So that won't be part of this project, but one of the things when the project is part of the project, the city has to do it separate because it's outside of the project, is to put a flashing beacon coming up on Washington Street coming into town. Pedestrian warning, flashing beacon, not in the project area. Nobody wanted them anywhere around the Red Church.
I understand.
But coming down. So that'll be separate, and we'll do that as part of the project, but it'll be separate. The city has to do that on its own because it can't be part of this project.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I think what the mayor of Porton was talking about was the sign, the fire museum sign and reposition the sign either up, or actually I believe it's down low so that there's sight when people are coming up Washington Street out here, that when they turn up to go Elkin, there's, that sign doesn't block them.
So it won't be.
We had discussed that in the past, and that's not actually part of this. That's something the city has to do on its, we have to do separately.
So there's some things that have happened. The red curb got put in, that was part of the project, it's already done. The monument and the sign at the museum, Public Works is currently coordinating getting those moved out. They won't be part of the project, but they'll be done before the project even starts.
Okay. Thank you. Because I didn't want to be pedantic there, but I appreciate you.
Sorry, I think that was.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sutch?
This is, I just have another, excuse me, question about something that's not part of this project, and I know that's probably not totally appropriate. But I would like the city to do something about the sidewalks behind the Red Church on Washington Street. They're, they're not, you know, there's, there are some spots where there's barely any lift. And also I think we could put a pedestrian, something around Wyckoff Street about pedestrian crossing ahead because you go up over kind of a hump and you don't even know that there's a crosswalk there necessarily until you're on top of it.
I think that's a question for your, for your capital improvement projects. For a future capital improvement project for the city, that's something for the, to discuss with the city administrator.
And we voted on the capital improvement projects from now until 2022.
And we voted on the capital improvement projects from now until two thousand twenty-three. So we put those in with your budget and we showed the project, all of that, so.
We didn't put that in, did we?
No, we did not.
Forgot.
Since twenty twenty-three.
I just don't want to get too far off on that, we actually agendized, so.
Right.
A long story short, that, that's a different topic.
Okay, so your city, community development director in two thousand twenty-three can, can work with your city administrator on that as I wind down in the next couple of years. But no, it'll be, I think it's very necessary. Caltrans has built up the pavement so bad that there's hardly any curbs anywhere along forty-nine. Um, so it is a good project, it's just outside the scope of this project.
Thanks.
Anyone else? This is exciting. Okay, is there any public comment on this matter? Okay, then I will bring it back to the council. Mary Rose, um, when was the last time we did a capital improvement project like this? Do you know? For the public's benefit?
Yeah.
It's been that long, so we're looking at, what, eight years?
No.
No, no, no.
No, no, two thousand sixteen, seventeen? Yeah.
Remember the, uh.
So it's, it's taking out the, taking out the gas station on the corner. Yes, that's right, that's right.
And you guys just did all the restriping as well, which is a capital improvement project that we just did with our SB one money. And your generator project, there's lots of things going on.
This is, this is just, to me, it's very exciting because, you know, that, this part of downtown has definitely needed a lot of work, especially with the sidewalks. So great job, um, everyone involved. And, uh, I guess my next question would be for a motion in a second.
Okay. In honor of Ronnie Stern, who always talked about the asphalt sidewalk right up here in front of, in front of the, uh, Dorothy's Christmas and wanting to get that improved for so long, I will move to authorize to advertise for public via the Red Church Pedestrian and Circulation Improvement Project.
And I will happily second it.
Motion by Councilmember Garavenna, second by Mayor Portem Plummer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any no's? Any abstentions? Passes five to zero. Onto item number eight, consideration to agendize for discussion and possible action at a future date. Consideration to adopt a resolution making findings in support of allowing remote meetings pursuant to AB three sixty-one. Modified Brown Act procedures during a declared emergency. Mary Rose.
Councilmembers, as I'm sure everyone is aware of, since March of two thousand twenty, we have been under executive order from the governor in regards to how our meetings are conducted um, in relation to the Brown Act. Um, in March of two thousand twenty, the governor suspended aspects of the Brown Act to allow for teleconferencing. Um, and those, uh, that executive order has since expired as of September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Um, their AB three sixty-one was signed by the governor on September sixteenth to take effect October first when his executive order expired in regards to allowing local jurisdictions to continue teleconferencing under certain jurisdictions. Um, the item before you is asking for the council to consider agendizing at a future date uh, because this council, um, if you recall, um, did approve by a three-two vote on July sixth, um, the discontinuing of teleconferencing and the allowing of in-person, um, meetings here in, in the city council, uh, chambers. So, um, the item before you again is asking whether or not, um, the council would like to agendize at a future date, um, making findings which are required under AB three sixty-one, um, which, um, we can go into detail once, if the council so chooses to agendize at a future date, what those findings would be. Um, but to make findings, um, and to possibly allow for, um, remote, uh, meetings pursuant to AB three sixty-one.
Councilmember Satch?
But it's not, it, it, if we choose remote, that, if we choose to allow remote meetings, we're not, we can still allow in-person meetings, correct?
So it's my recommendation as your city administrator that the staff time involved in doing a hybrid model of both in-person and teleconferencing is, is pretty heavy on staff time. Now, are you saying whether or not to do one or the other?
No, I, no, I was asking about, not, and I wasn't ask, I was asking about, uh, the legality of doing both.
Uh. So making, making the findings but still doing in-person, is that what you're stating? Is that what you're asking?
Still doing in-person and allowing, uh, remote.
So you, I mean, so the council has discretion under the executive order and, um, or I shouldn't say the executive order, under AB three sixty-one, uh, to be able to do a hybrid meeting if, if that was your choice. Um, or you can allow, uh, hybrids where, you know, the council conducts itself one way and gives the discretion to committees to do, to do it differently if they so choose. But, but everything is dictated by, by the council. And in order to do anything that involves, uh, any level of remote, you would need to be able to make these monthly findings.
I'm sorry, make what?
Monthly, you have to make findings every month.
Oh, okay.
Of, of the state of the emergency, that certain criteria exist, you know, because that's, that's the basis.
I didn't hear the word findings.
Yeah, so, so, so the council controls and decides within the context of it. If you go back to business as usual, you don't do anything. Uh, you just conduct your meetings as you do, everything's in person, uh, but what's like business pre-COVID. If you want to do any kind of hybrid or if you want to do just, uh, online, uh, then, uh, you have to make these findings once a month.
Does this apply to, um, city council?
Yes, because the group, the, AB three sixty-one requires the findings to be made by the legislative body. The city council is the legislative body. Now, as, um, Doug just stated, they could give discretion to the committees, but those findings still need to be met and authorized by the city council.
Yeah, so the city council would, in order for a, a committee to do it, there'd have to be two findings from the city council. A, there'd have to be a finding monthly that the emergency still exists, conditions still exist. And two, um, um, it would have to, you'd have to specifically authorize the committees to make that decision in and amongst them, themselves.
So the definition of findings is?
Oh, sorry.
The definition of.
I'm hogging it and you're the elected.
Yeah, yeah. You're looking good with it.
Um, the definition of findings then, um, is a, uh, is the definition of an emergency?
No, and, and again, this is just a future, to agendize at a future date for full discussion.
Right, right.
So if the, because the council already vote on a three-two motion, a three-two vote to keep in-person, um, I am asking the council to give direction on whether or not a majority of the council wants to have this brought back for a broader discussion to make those findings and a more detailed discussion of what those findings are.
But, but it's a resolution.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, s, any other council discussion?
Not until after public.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I think that's wise, I will also wait.
Any public comment on this matter?
You have to come, you have to come sit.
You keep talking about findings and I don't understand what you mean, that you need findings in order to do this.
Good question.
We probably don't either, as I understand it and I might be wrong. Uh, that will be something to be decided by the council if we go forward.
I would say let Doug answer that.
Yeah, oh yes, of course.
So, a, again.
Um, so you'd be finding that there is a.
Uh, findings that there is a proclaimed state of emergency and/or state or local officials have imposed recommended, uh, social distancing requirements and things of that nature. So it just goes, as it relates to the pandemic, which is what we're talking about right now and COVID. So if there's a requirement for social distancing, which we have locally, if there's, uh, findings that the, that the pandemic still exists and the state of emergency still exists, then, um, then you can make, then those would be the type of findings that would go into it that would allow for this deviation from what would otherwise be, what I'll say, pre-COVID normal.
Yeah, and then one of the findings is that you, there is imminent risk to meet in person. And so you're making that finding to continue with teleconferencing.
Okay, any other public comment on this? Okay, so I'll bring it back to the council. I guess it's just a consensus is what you need.
I do, I, again, I will stress though, and this was discussed heavily too with the county board of supervisors and CAO Riggs and I have been in agreement with this, that the amount of staff resource, resources to continue a hybrid model is extremely taxing, especially on a small agency such as ourselves where we don't have an IT department, we don't have a clerk. Um, CAO Riggs also made that same, um, declaration at the board of supervisors um, that it, it's, it's, it's a lot on city resources. So my, um, recommendation, if you, if you move forward with looking at this, I would, I would kindly ask the council to consider staff time and look at either doing one or the other.
Okay, so I guess we'll ask, oh, go ahead, Mr. Mayor Portem.
Well, if, I mean, I don't want us to get to a consensus here before having a chance to make some comments. And that is, to some degree, this is the new normal. I, for, I hope all of us actually prefer meeting in person. It is so much more productive, faster, and just making eye contact with a real person has value. Uh, moreover, like I said, it was starting to say, this is the new normal. We need to adapt to it and if, we are all masked, we are all either vaccinated or either already safe or taking one's own risk. But there's nobody in here who is ignorant as to any risks that are being run. And the issue of staff time and effort, this is not only cheapest for the city, but I believe best. And I would just say we accept this as such going forward. And so we don't need to make a monthly determination that CNN was especially scary this month. So we're going to, you know, just go to Zoom again. If the different committees, uh, have a different view on that, I have no, you know, if I'm not on a committee, I'm not really worried about how they prefer to do business. But, uh, that, of course, then it seems like it affects or the decision we make will affect the entire process. So I would, I am against it. I don't think we need to go forward with this.
Okay. Councilmember Satch?
Well, I, I actually think we do need to go forward with this if we're going to talk about what we're going to allow committees to do, number one. And I, Mary, uh, Administrator Rudy, Rudy Conga, can you tell me how, if this meeting had been, if it had been allowed on Zoom, how that would have taken up more staff time?
So every, prior to every council meeting, um, Chris comes into this room about an hour beforehand to test all the equipment. Um, we generally have an issue, um, and so he's figuring out that issue, um, generally about an hour beforehand, if not more. Um, he is not a clerk, he is a department head. Um, and so he needs to be back with department heads and addressing the council as a department head instead of running a monitor as a clerk. Um, and also I will just give an example, on Friday I did have a coordinated meeting, a hybrid Zoom and, um, in-person with the county homelessness, uh, navigation center ad hoc committee. Um, myself and Trace Skelly, Trace Skelly came in early for me, um, on overtime to ensure that the system was up and running. She sat through the, with me. Um, so again, taking up her time as opposed to being downstairs doing HR matters to get, um, a coordinated effort of this. Um, it, it, it is something that is not, um, it is something that generally an IT department oversees. Again, we, we have one IT person. Um, and so it, it has taken quite a bit of Chris's time to coordinate this effort. I would say hundreds of hours, um, coordinating this. So it's not just the aspect of Zoom, it's the preparation for the meeting. It's the editing of the, of the, um, the video afterwards to get it posted on YouTube. Um, and so it does take quite a bit of Chris's time, um, when dealing with, um, a, a hybrid system, if you will.
If, if there, when there's a city clerk, would Chris still be expected to do that or would the city clerk do it?
Again, the city clerk is an hourly employee, so if there were situations in which required additional time that we, you know, have to compensate accordingly, but yes, Chris would be overseeing, um, the functions of the city clerk as well.
Anyone else? Anna, Jim?
Um, Mark, were you going to say something, Jim, or?
Uh, I, I, I'm just thinking about committees and, um, convenience, I guess. Um, and, um, well, I belong to the yes partnership, which is like thirty people. And, uh, I mean, it would be, I guess, they gathered, I don't know, before at, at ACTA. Um, now, I mean, people, um, and, and the, I just was on a, uh, committee meeting for the, um, uh, Central Sierra Economic Development District. And, I mean, not with, when committee members are far-flung, it's, Zoom is a real convenience because, uh, it's difficult for everybody to gather. And I understand that it's great to see face to face, but, um, you know, there is the, there is that time and convenience factor that, um, that members of the committees also have to think about.
Well, my, my concern is definitely the hybrid, not having the hybrid. I think, um, either you do one or the other. Uh, it's just much more, uh, staff time that we don't have to do, um, um, that, uh, to do a hybrid. I know the county has, 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 um, I guess, a different interpretation or they're doing it differently. Some of their meetings are, um, in-person with, um, call-in, or the board, their board meetings call-in also has Zoom. Um, of course, they have a much larger staff to do, um, I, they have a much larger IT staff. They have, you know, all that kind of stuff. They have an IT staff. Uh, some of their meetings, some of their committee meetings are meeting on Zoom. Um, some are hybrid, uh, the solid waste committee meeting that, uh, just was at last week was a hybrid. Um, I think it's difficult to do, uh, more difficult for us to do a hybrid than it would be to do a Zoom or do just in-person. Um, so I wouldn't want to go down the hybrid route. But I know, like I said, I know the county is doing something different and I, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to, find out more of how that's working and, um, because I do, being on the social equity committee, I do see, um, how that works well with Zoom as opposed to being in-person or, or certainly a hybrid system. But I wouldn't want to go back to that here, for example. Um, and then there's also the planning commission. So I guess I'm kind of rambling, but I, I, I can see, I can see a little more value in talking about it as it, as it evolves. Um, and it, by the time we talk about it, the, uh, the guidelines from the governor may have changed and, uh, yet again. And, you know, the need for, uh, state of emergency may have changed as well, so. So that's kind of my thoughts as we go around the room.
Councilmember Garavenna, if I, if I may, and I know this is just to agendize at a future discussion, so I don't want to discuss. But the, the board of supervisors did make findings, so they're not doing it differently. They did make the findings, allowing those committees to make the determination themselves, which is what, uh, the city attorney stated in the beginning.
So that we could change the findings to do the, in theory, we could change the findings to do similar, to do the same thing. So let me be very clear because I saw confusion, so I want to read. So there are three essentially findings that you could make. So number one, there's a proclaimed state of emergency and state or local officials have imposed or recommended measures to promote social distancing. Or two, there is a proclaimed state of emergency and the local agencies meeting is for the purpose of determining by majority vote whether, as a result of the emergency, meeting in person would present imminent risk to the health and safety, sa- health or safety of attendees. Or three, so these are all or, so it can be any one of them. There is a proclaimed state of emergency and the local agency is determined by majority vote that as a result of the emergency meeting in person would present an imminent risk to the health and safety of attendees. So if you make any one of those findings and it allows you to continue in a hybrid or remote, remote world or a hybrid meaning that it, you could have, you could have both at like a meeting like today or you could allow some.
like a meeting like today, or you could allow some places like the city council to meet only in person, but give that discretion to the committees in order to be able to allow them to choose. To allow the committees to be able to choose, the city council every 30 days would have to make these findings.
All three findings?
At least, at least one of the three, one of the three findings, in order to be able to let them to do it there. And you'd have to put the parameters, so, meaning that.
Apparently, the county's done so.
Yes, they did. They passed a resolution on October 5.
So so that's effectively the process. And so I think the question for you is, is it worth revisiting for the city as a whole, only for committees, or not at all? And I think that's that's what we're kind of trying to get direction on. And that's the only question tonight is whether, what, if any part of this, do you want to revisit?
Mr. Mayor Potem?
Okay. I'm still trying to suss out why when people are masked, were masked, were masked, were vaccinated, were pretty far apart, what the emergency is and why we're worrying about this. Yeah, please, I'm, this is a sincere question.
No, I I think it's a valid question. But I will say that masked and vaccinated people are still dying from COVID, not at the rate of unvaccinated. But in this community, that fully vaccinated and masked people have died. So there is still some risk, and it's not, it's, I think, more to immunocompromised people. I have a good friend whose husband, who looks fine, she would never come to an in-person meeting because her husband is, has a very aggressive form of prostate cancer and is very immunocompromised, and she cannot bring COVID home. So I think that's something to consider. I mean, we're not out of the woods. People are dying still daily. And fully vaccinated people are, you know, die at a much lower rate, but they're still at risk.
Okay, if the vaccines are that ineffective, why on God's sweet earth are we having all of our tech overlords and other people try and compel everyone to get a vaccine?
We're going more to the political realm and lessen to whether or not we want to make findings of states of emergency for hybrid meetings or not. So I'd probably try to.
I just have to correct. I did not say the vaccines were ineffective. I did not. It's just that they're not 100% and people are still at risk.
Are we not just going to agendize to talk?
Yeah, so I find it unnecessary. So, Mary Rose, all you need is a consensus, correct?
Exactly.
Just so we're not wasting time, can we at least clarify whether or not we're talking about the city council and all the committees? Just the committees or nothing at all? Because that way, because those are different things to bring back and take different amount of time.
So what?
I would make a recommendation to bring it back and talk about committees. I think tonight has shown that we do in-person meetings here pretty well, but I I would like to talk about committees.
Okay. Councilmember Garavina or Segas?
I would just endorse that. I would like to talk about committees.
Well, I've already said I didn't want to change the council. So, yeah, I think we should look at committees. Bring it up again.
So we got the three so far.
I think I've been clear that I'm, I have no objection to the committees. If if they are worried about and insecure, then that doesn't affect me. But I think that for our public meetings, that we really need to keep them in person for our council meetings. But that seems to be general consensus.
Yeah, so you've got your consensus?
Yep.
Cool. We only started arguing about things, so that's that's a plus.
That wasn't an argument.
No.
So is that a 5-0 consensus or 4-1?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You never really said. Yes, I am, as long as we're talking about committees, I do not want to take the council into that direction. So, but yeah, that's fine, committee, so you have your consensus.
Okay, so this will be brought back on the next council meeting. I just want the council to be aware that we do have committees meeting between now and then. So it's my understanding that the committees would need to meet in person because we have not made the findings yet and it has passed the execution date of the AB 361.
Okay. Excellent. So on to monthly reports and then council member and department head reports. Chief News still back there? Oh, there she is. Okay, Chief Vander Wheel.
Good evening again. Two real quick things to bring to your and the public's attention is that it's October, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We are wearing our pink badge inserts to promote awareness. And as you know from the past years, an officer wearing a pink badge means that they have donated to that very important cause. So just sharing the word about that. And also, as as part of our planning process with the city, it came up as, you know, develop the nonprofit organization for the police department as as one of our goals. And we are there. We are officially able to accept, and I say we, I mean, the Friends of Sonora Police Department, a separate entity. But I am just sharing what they have formed their their group, and they're able to take donations as we speak. So two accomplishments for them. And I think that's all I got for today. Pardon me? Yes, yes. Right now, we only have a mailing address, but we're going to put, they're they're working on a website to put all that information for contact. And I will, good point, I should probably have shared that here today, but I don't have it with me. But yes, we can definitely direct anybody to those those people. They're making the decisions. That's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. Rochelle?
Just a couple of quick updates. So our normal Santa is not going to be able to participate this year. So we, Katie and I have been working together. She's come up with a couple of people that might be interested. So we'll be working on that. If you know of anybody that would love to be Santa, please have them call me because we are looking for somebody. So that he just isn't able to do it because of COVID. So anyway, also, we're waiting for the encroachment permit to be delivered for the Christmas parade. Mary Rose had heard a rumor from the county. It was confirmed by the gentleman that we apply with with Caltrans. It says his understanding that it has been mailed and we should be receiving it shortly. So he was going to double check on that because we have two encroachment permits pending with them, one for the decorations and the other for the parade. So he wants to make sure that the right one is the one that's in the mail, so for the parade. So anyway, and we are moving forward. Applications are on the website. They're available. We'll be reaching out to everybody that participated in the past. Kim will be back Wednesday so that we can get everybody signed up and and get everybody going with the parade. Everybody that participates in the parade will be required to wear a mask, and that has been made clear in the application process for the parade. So we are moving forward with it.
And that's in consultation with the Public Health Department.
Correct. And then the, I know you guys are probably wondering, the next project that will be coming forward to you guys for authorization to go to bid will be the transit project. And that should be to you within the next couple of meetings. We're wrapping that one up as well so that we can get moving forward on getting that one down to bid as well, but also with a spring start, just like the one we just talked about tonight. So anyway, I just want to let you guys know that, that they are moving, we are moving step forward. I also want to let you know that we have, you know, we have the planning position available. We haven't had a lot of applicants, unfortunately, but we do have a consultant through our new CSG contract that should be able to start in about three weeks, a couple of weeks now, and at least give us some relief so we can get some of our ordinances cleaned up, adopted, and start moving forward with planning stuff that's been pending while we've been busy with a lot of other stuff.
Okay, Mr. Gorski.
Just an update on the damages from the Washington fire. We did meet with representatives from Cal OES, and they reviewed property damage over on South Gate. And now it's a matter of coming up with evaluations for the old animal control building, the station three, is that what they call it out there? Yeah, so there, and the cabin and a few other things out there. We also had members from the insurance, from our RMA insurance. They were out there as well, doing some assessments and looking at potential claim and if there is some potential value that they would be paying us for, so.
Thank you. City Administrator?
And just a quick follow up on that. We still have yet to receive the declaration from the governor on the on the disaster. So with with us waiting, we are still yet unsure of the 75% reimbursement to the city on our fire costs. So right now, it's just kind of a waiting game. I've been working with Dory Beats and ensuring that that is on the governor's desk and waiting for his approval, but we're still waiting. Just a quick update, we have begun to launch our marketing campaign for local businesses as COVID recovery. We talked about that at Budget Time. We had budgeted $50,000 in our ARPA monies to ensure that we are marketing and ensuring some economic development for our local businesses here in the city of Sonora. So we have begun that. They, we have created a new landing page that's going to be accessed through our website to highlight our local businesses, our restaurants and so forth here within the city of Sonora. And that's going to be professionally done, obviously, through this consultant. And then also, they are doing a social media campaign through Facebook and Instagram, highlighting the beautiful city of Sonora and our local businesses.
Thank you. And I forgot about our city attorney because he hasn't been here for a while. He's been here per Zoom.
Just been up there.
Yeah.
Nothing more tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Segas?
I should have left it on. Unable to. So to start off on a happy note, I watched the Fall Drought Early Warning System Outlook for California, which is fairly grim, but was offset last night by actual rain, and we might have some next weekend. So La Niña's forecast and a dry winter. So let's hope we can, you know, maybe we're on the edge of the wet system that comes down from from the Pacific Northwest. I've gone, I've been in touch with the Blue Zone. I thought maybe Christie Contorti would be here tonight for, to suggest a presentation with Adventist Health about helping us all to live longer, healthier lives. But I suggest that maybe this is something that the council would be interested in hearing. The Energy Action Committee has rebooted, and perhaps at next meeting, you will consider making it a city committee. We would like to expand it to climate action versus just focusing on energy. And we have several action items already in the pipeline, including a Title 24 meeting for contractors, solar power presentations, grant research, and et cetera, et cetera. So we're all kind of charged about literally moving forward. There, I went to, I had a TUD informational meeting with Director Murphy and interim manager Perkins, and they would also like to present to the council about the forthcoming purchase of PG&E infrastructure and water rights and would ask the the council for a resolution of support. And I I'm totally behind this effort. I think the the city should be in unison with the with TUD to to purchase our water and keep it in the county. So the Yes Partnership, just a reminder that this weekend is Drug Takeback Weekend from 10 to 2 on Saturday at the library. They also presented the Tuolumne County Schools Healthy Kids Survey, which shows earlier usage of drug and alcohol among our young people. And they are also, the county schools would also be interested in presenting that to the council. The Central Sierra, boy, I'm going to keep you guys busy for a while. Central Sierra Economic Development District is looking at a, this biomass project, and it sounds really exciting for private property owners to find a way to recycle biomass for profit. So Cole Crisbola would love to come and talk to the city council about that. This morning, we were at a TUD groundbreaking for a new wastewater plant, which is going to be fantastic. And Katie Dunn is here. We've been talking about Christmas Town, Sonora Christmas Town, and she has really fantastic plan and and committee that is going to help downtown Sonora really shine this Christmas. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Garavina?
Yeah. Attended the Solid Waste Committee meeting, the Board of Supervisors, and on the Wednesday, the 13th. And also attending was our Public Works Supervisor to be there and to meet with the folks there. And and we kind of did some, had some discussion and public comment about some of the issues that we've had downtown and how to resolve them. And we will be on the agenda net for the, it's a monthly meeting, and we'll be on the agenda for an update on that. And met also at the same time, touch base with Vanessa from Waste Management, who's also attending the meeting. And I think they've set, and Mary Rose, I think they've set up a time with you and to get going to figure out what we're going to end up finally doing with the issues we've had. Also attended the chaired the Transportation Council meeting, basically finalizing our budgets, both for the us, for the council and for the transit agency, and approved the resolution to purchase the electric powered bus. And did some, actually, a bit of last minute arrangement of of finding income or funding a revenue stream that was almost specifically for the electric bus and freeing up some some money that we were going to spend that's a little more useful across the board for transportation issues in the county. So it actually worked out that we were able to do that. It's it's a kind of a pilot project with this with this electric bus. It'll give us actually real data, how an electric bus actually works in our environment and our topography. Hopefully, and some of that will, feedback, we'll get back to the powers that be to see if, you know, a more realistic view of mandates versus, you know, if we have to go through mandates and it doesn't work as well in our environment, how to adjust for that rather than having a mandate. So we're kind of taking a proactive approach to having information and being, you know, being able to make it useful for for the California, hopefully as a whole, certainly our county. And there was another item on the agenda that I I'm forgetting. Also, attended the League of California Cities Annual Conference. Very interesting conference. A lot of issues. Very much enjoyed it. There was a lot of things that you could, seminars you could attend at the same time, and a lot of them, I wanted to go to all of them. And then there were some times that I didn't really want to go one, any of them. But one of the the biggest ones that actually Mary Rose went as well, and the one we attended together toward the end of the conference was the Post-COVID Retail Trends and Opportunities. And they talked a lot. and they talked a lot about how COVID has changed the economic, how people are doing things. I think we actually won, and I don't know how we're going to do with our topography if we go this way, but one of the things they talked about was that fast food restaurants are now going to multiple drive-in lanes, because you get the people coming up that are ordering at the time, you get the people that called in ahead of time and ordered their stuff, and it's ready to go, so they don't need to wait in line for the others. So, in the larger jurisdictions, they actually have several lines, they have, like I said, online call-in, different things, and that's kind of a new trend now across the country. And that's just one example of some of the stuff that we learned at that particular one. Also attended, we had, they had a rural cities, what they call the Rural Cities Information Exchange, and basically it was, a lot of it was not so much sitting down and talking with the different small town people, but it was, was based on, the subject was water issues, and there's a new grant program for drought sustainability or, I'm trying to think of the other word, I can't think of it right now, but for very small towns that have, have a small water system, there's, it's a two-tier system, it's several, is it $3 billion, $2 billion, do you remember? Three, and I think it was a billion and a half in each of these ones, for very small microsystems that actually we didn't, we don't, we in the city don't, wouldn't, couldn't tap onto, but the other one was for small jurisdictions that have 115, 1500 districts that have 1500 hookups or more, and it was actually perfect for a TUD type of grant type of thing, and so there was the exchange, that was the subject of that, but it was nice to have the rural cities in a room talking to each other, because, you know, a lot of, a lot of knock on the League of California Cities was, it was like the League of California Big Cities, but they've done actually an effort to have, to reach out to the smaller jurisdictions, so I think that's amazing thing, a good thing. And then we also had, there was dinners that were sponsored by the sub, what's called, ours is the Central California Division, different divisions within the city, and we all met together for regional issues and talked about things, and then also met, met up with our esteemed counselor and his, took a tour of his office down in Modesto, Sacramento, and, and I'm talking about him and he's not even paying attention. Oh, okay, all right, I thought you were on the computer, so, yeah, I almost, almost had you in Modesto, and so it was, it was a nice, nice to see the, where our litigation and proximity, proximity to the Capitol, where all that is to... Yeah, real close, and meet up with some of the staff that we don't necessarily always meet up with, some of the young, young folks there. But all in all, it was a great, great conference, and as she reaches for hers, we got our conference mug and all that, but it was very useful to meet up with different members of different communities, I had a discussion with one of the council members of Weed up in, way up in Siskiyou County, and of course, we spent a lot of time with the city administrator with Angels Camp, which has similar needs to ours, so that's, that's about it.
Councilmember Sarge?
Is any of that going to be on film tape?
That's, I was going to bring that up, yes. Sadly, there's, the major keynote speaks, speakers and stuff like that are on the county, the League's website, but the individual seminars sadly are not filmed, and I think that's actually something that they need to look into, because it would be a great opportunity to remotely get information through that website to, as we are League members, to get, get that information. The other, and I just went right back out of my mind again.
You're in my time now.
Okay, go ahead, there was something, oh, I keep trying to remember something, then go ahead, I'll remember it.
It's all right, it's okay, okay, oh, all right. I attended, obviously, the Social Equity Committee, our last one, which was supposed to take place on the 12th, which was a Tuesday, because Monday was a holiday, was canceled because we didn't have a quorum. I attended the Central Sierra Consortium of Care, and again, that is a committee that it's all the low-income and homeless funding comes through them, and it's a, it's a great committee, I thank you, Mary Rose, for asking me to be on that. I also attended the Topeka County Commission on Homelessness, and we meet, we seem to meet twice a month, and then there are subcommittees for that, and that's just, it's a committee that was put together by the Board of Supervisors, and it's to bring different, all the elements from the county, from the entire community, to, to really try to do some smart problem solving. And through that, I'm on a subcommittee, I think it's called a subcommittee, to find space for homeless camps, so that they're not just randomly camping around, and that's, that's actually, is proving to be quite a difficult task. For Topeka County Transportation Council, I just want to say that the electric vehicle is hugely exciting, the electric, the electric bus, but also, there's a proposal for a park and ride project in Jamestown, that is, so people can like meet, and people do that already, they meet and drive to Modesto together or to the Bay Area together, but they're proposing, you know, a formal parking area that will include perhaps an outbuilding and public bathrooms. And just this Wednesday, and I know that this is in the future, but it's, I'm just excited about it, so I'm going to mention it, Jim and I will be attending the Topeka County Transportation Council Strategic Planning Workshop, and you will be there as well, so that's, that's very exciting, and I didn't know that they did, that Topeka County Transportation Council actually had strategic workshops. What else? And I also attended the TUD wastewater plant groundbreaking ceremony this morning, an exciting project, and I think will be, will bring us into the 21st century and beyond, and actually do the work with a whole lot less water, which is critical. That's it for me.
Did you want to go back to that one thing you said?
Yeah, I did remember, Steve Qualls, who's our representative from the League, and basically for the whole Central Valley Division, had a chance to talk with him about coming up here and doing, basically twice a year at strategic times, you know, based on what's happening in Sacramento, to come up and give us updates direct here at our council meeting for all of us, and he's agreed, he's agreed to do that, so, and also, I did also attend the TUD and thing, and met my cousin, who's actually a contractor for TUD, just started, so it was kind of funny, turn around the corner and here he is.
Mr. Mayor Portim?
Thank you, I attended the Caldor Fire at some length, it was quite tiresome, but it is largely contained and in very good hands, so, speaking of good hands, it's great to be back, it's actually a pleasure to see all of you, some people might doubt me on that, but no one in this room, I'm certain, so, the fire response in my absence was to be applauded, and I am so glad that, that Sonora is relatively unscathed and still here for my return, I love this little town, and, and it was great work, and I want to thank all of the leadership and the people who, on the ground, who were carrying hoses and putting out fire, and the bombers who were fortuitously right close, so, also, there was a great deal of really, really good work done by staff that I would like to applaud from, you know, moving forward on the projects that we've been working on to other, other more subterranean things, and I, thank you and appreciate your great work enormously. Sort of on that note, the, the nonprofit by our Sonora Police is something I think is very exciting, and it will be wonderful when we can start getting volunteers, I'm certain that we will have no dearth of volunteers for helping that, there are some good projects already underway, and I don't know if we're at liberty to talk about it at this point, but they will be pretty cool. Lastly, on a pretty nonpartisan point, the issue about the TUD water rights is something that I would strongly support, I think that it is probably one of the most important issues before the county going forward, and it's probably a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and, and I really appreciate your work with that and your support for it and bringing it to our attention again, so, thank you.
On the 29th, I attended the Sonora Sunrise Rotary Meeting and was able to represent the city very happily to do so, and I probably talked too much like I normally do, and they seemed to be happy with that, so, met with, I don't know, various community members, and just very thankful to be here, and we will adjourn our meeting at 7:04 PM.